It's 5:31. I'm calling this meeting to order. Roca.
Merida Cantú present.
Armin Garza present.
Aldo Benavides present.
Alex Cantú present.
Doctor Salinas, I do declare one.
Thank you, Mr. Salinas. Can we please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any public comments, sir?
Yes, we do have a public comment from Brenda Lee Salinas, President of La Jolla AFT.
Okay.
She'll be coming to the podium.
Good evening, Ms. Salinas. You have three minutes.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, good afternoon, Mr. President, Board of Trustees, Dr. Science, and members of the community. I am Brenda Lee Salinas, the proud president of La Jolla AFT, and I represent approximately 1,300 La Jolla ISD employees. The COVID-19 pandemic has affected our lives in many ways, physically, emotionally, and mentally. The COVID-19 has caused many educators and school employees to quit or resign, and has harmed students' achievement. Our school district employees have worked extremely hard and endured a tremendous amount of stress and hardship. The pandemic made our jobs more difficult, but La Jolla ISD stepped it up to make sure that we stayed focused on the educational welfare of our district students. Teachers spend nights, endless nights, planning and creating their own Google Classroom presentations, which are very time-consuming, and spending their own money on resources and disinfectant supplies to make their job effectively and safe during the pandemic. La Jolla AFT is proposing a world-deserved employee compensation to include all district employees that contribute to helping our students during this crisis, to include teachers all the way to custodian employees. La Jolla ISD has always been incredibly competitive, and we trust our school board members, our decision-makers, to make La Jolla AFT salary compensation proposal a priority for our district employees. The 5% pay raise across the board, $5,000 COVID-19 stipend paid by the end of June, and $50 hourly pay for all summer school employees. Mr. President, thank you. Board of Trustees, thank you, Dr. Science, and I yield back my time.
Thank you, Ms. Salinas. Okay, moving on. Next will be the discussion of the 2021-22 proposed budget.
Thank you, Mr. Salinas. For this discussion, we will have Mr. Jaime López, who's our Executive Director for Administration and Finance, lead the discussion. And Board of Trustees, you all do have a packet at your desk for this discussion.
Dr. Science, while we're reading, Mrs. Hernandez joined us at 5:33, and Ms. Ochoa at 5:36.
Thank you, Dr. Benavides.
Good afternoon, everyone. Tonight, we're coming here to bring you an update on our budget plan for 2022, and we'll go over the first slide where we have our assumptions. So, here, pretty much, on the revenue side, everything stayed intact. We are still working with our financial advisor to go over our INS rate. We're still missing some information from them. We kept everything else the same as far as our MNO rate went, and our property values, and our tax collections. So, from the revenue standpoint, everything stayed the same. The updates you'll see tonight in the next two slides are going to be pretty much on the cost side, and that's something that Mr. Ben Garza will be going over. We are still assuming a 2% pay raise, and nothing is coming up on the insurance plan as far as increasing premiums. So, I'll let Mr. Ben Garza talk about the expenses and how that impacted our overall profit loss.
Okay, here's a... Good afternoon, Mr. President, Board members. This slide, you're familiar with, and you see every year, represents our preliminary budget at this moment for 2021-22. We've pretty much cleared up our 100 funds. As you can see, the difference are all zeros, but we still do not have our federal entitlements posted up on the TEA website. They should be posted by, I think they told me, May 18th, and that'll clear up those differences on the federal funds. The federal funds begin with the 200 to 211 down to the 289. So, we're just waiting on those entitlements to clear, those balances up, but pretty much the 100 funds are up on top, as you can see.
Mr. Garza.
Yes.
I'm just going to stop you. One of our board members, we can't hear on one side. If you can raise it a little bit toward my left, your right.
Yes.
Sorry about that, Ms. Ochoa.
My bad. The subtotal there shows a minus $16,199 in the red at this point, the deficit. We have worked to bring that number down from the last time we met here. We brought it down approximately about $4 million. Just to let you know, all departments in Central Office and in the Business and Finance Department, including Operations, have cut their department budget by 20%. So, we're able to bring that number down drastically. On the following slide, you will see it broken down by the General Fund, the Special Revenue Funds, and our Debt Service. We've pretty much tied the Debt Service. We're still pending the INS rate. That may change a little bit. And on the General Fund side, you can see that we're budgeting a deficit at this point at $17,298,000. This is, again, with a 2% salary increase. And at this moment, that's all I have. We have Gloria.
Mr. Garza, what did you say that the departments cut their budget by?
Each department in Central Office, Business Office, and in Operations has cut their budget by 20%.
20?
20%. Non-payroll costs. So, that came out to about $2.9 million.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
The last slide in the presentation is not projecting up there. You do have that in your packets, and we're presenting you the two different models in regards to the salary increases. Model 2 is where it shows the 2% increase, and so that one would cost the district an additional $4.2 million in salaries for a total cost of payroll salaries for next year at $209,683,724, as presented at the previous workshop.
Board of Trustees, do you have any questions on any of these slides that were presented on our preliminary budget for 2021-22?
Any questions, guys?
Just repeat the number for the salaries, Gloria.
Yeah.
The total cost for the salary increases with a 2% raise would cost the district an additional $4,253,945.
As listed in the bottom. Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any more questions, guys? If not, I'll go dispute adjourned at 5:42. It's 6:01. I'm calling this meeting to order. Roca.
Aldo Benavides present.
Alex Cantú present.
Mary Hernandez present.
Escutra present.
Merida Cantú present.
Armin Garza present.
I do declare one, Dr. Science.
Thank you, Mr. Salinas. Can we please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next up, guys, be the approval of the minutes. Can I have a tele-motion for items 1 and 2?
Mr. Salinas.
Public comments, I'm sorry.
Yes, we do have public comments. We have Mr. Israel González.
Mr. González, you'll have three minutes. At no time will the board be able to answer any of the questions. Mr. Flores, our legal, will keep the time. Whenever there's a minute left, he'll let you know so that you can start closing. Okay? You may start whenever you're ready, sir.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. I stand before you today as a concerned parent, a parent that knows all too well that there's been many difficult challenges before us due to the pandemic. However, some things have... Some problems have cascaded, become bigger, than they really needed to be, I feel. I'll get right to the point. The American Academy of Pediatrics, they have a few points on their website. They state that school transmission mirrors but does not drive community transmission. Additionally, they state in their summary that the American Academy of Pediatrics strongly advocates that all policy considerations for school COVID-19 plans should start with a goal of having students physically present in school. Additionally, the National Center for Biotechnology Information, National Institutes of Health, they emphasize the importance of mental health for our children and how this pandemic, these lockdowns, have had a very detrimental effect on them. For that reason, I stand before you today to ask you to consider, to ask the board in particular, to clarify their positions with regards to reopening of schools for the 2021-2022 school year for face-to-face instruction or learning. Now, I want to clarify. When I say "face-to-face instruction," I'm not talking about what's currently happening, where we have students sit in front of a computer. I am asking for traditional learning, real learning. Repeated study after study has shown that what we have right now is not working. What we have right now is not appropriate. "It is essential that guardians, educational institutions, and health authorities protect and guard the mental health of children consistently through open communication and facilitate professional counseling to address aggressors." That is a quote from them. I've done my part. Where is La Jolla ISD? Additionally, another thing that comes that I'm very passionate about, because La Jolla has a very close association with AFT. The president of AFT recently, or the chief of AFT recently, has gone on TV to say that they are pushing the 1619 Project, also known as the Critical Race Theory. This is disputed by historians everywhere. I ask the board to provide a rebuke or at least an assurance that we are not going to push this propaganda and lies on our children. Additionally, I'll briefly point out, La Jolla ISD has lost 1,000 students. This is from your own data online, to charter schools. This is a very specific demographic that you're losing. There's a reason for that. You are leaders. I ask you not to be reactive. I ask you to be proactive. Open up our schools. Do what's right for our children. Thank you. Have a great day.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, guys, moving on. Next one. Can I attend a motion for items 1 and 2? On the approval of minutes.
So move.
I have a motion. And a second. All those in favor who came by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. I pass that on to you, Dr. Science.
Thank you, Mr. Salinas. Before the superintendent's report, I just want to say that this week we're celebrating our school nurses. We're very appreciative of the work our nurses do every day, every year. But this year, during the pandemic, our nurses have done an incredible job taking care of the health of our students and our community, and we want to thank them for their service. Thank you to the Health Services Department under the leadership of Ms. Marisa Morales, Director of District Nurse Coordinator, and to all our nurses for the guidance they have given our administration during the pandemic. The enrollment report is a report as of May 4, 2021. At this time, we had 12,263 elementary students, 14,491 secondary students, for a total of 26,754, which is 671 less students than at this time last year. The next item on the superintendent's report is recognition of La Jolla ISD valedictorians and salutatorians for the 2020-2021 school year. Ms. Melinda Flores, our Executive Director for High Schools, will do this recognition.
Good evening, Board President, Mr. Salinas, Board members, Dr. Science, and members of our community. My name's Melinda Flores. I'm the Executive Director for High Schools, and this evening, I have the honor of recognizing our district valedictorians and salutatorians who've worked very hard to earn these titles. The students and their families are joining us live through our livestream, so I'd like to present to you our La Jolla High School valedictorian, Alia Álvarez. Alia is the daughter of Claudia Mesa. She will be attending the Conservatory of Recording Arts and Sciences in Arizona, where she will be majoring in music. She attended Cesar Chavez Middle School and Guillermo Flores Elementary. Our La Jolla High School salutatorian is Brianna E. Chapa. Brianna is the daughter of Juan Chapa and Nancy De León. She will be attending Bochini University in Milan, Italy. Brianna will be majoring in Economics and Management for Arts, Culture, and Communications. She attended Cesar Chavez Middle School and Guillermo Flores Elementary. For La Jolla Juárez Lincoln High School, our valedictorian is Amanda Michelle Salinas. She is the daughter of Araceli Rangel and Fabian Salinas. She will be attending the University of the Rio Grande Valley and majoring in Biology. Amanda attended Ann Richards Middle School, Elodia R. Chapa Elementary, and Narciso Cavazos Elementary. Our La Jolla Juárez Lincoln High School salutatorian is Elizabeth Abila. Elizabeth is the daughter of Maria G. and Eusebio Abila Jr. Elizabeth will be attending Michigan State University and majoring in Biochemistry and Molecular Biology. She attended Ann Richards Middle School and Elodia R. Chapa Elementary. Our La Jolla Palmview High School valedictorian is Clarissa B. Cortés. Clarissa is the daughter of Norma González. She will be attending the University of Texas, Rio Grande Valley, and majoring in English. She attended Memorial Middle School and Quica de la Garza Elementary. Our La Jolla Palmview High School salutatorian is Javier Pina. Javier is the son of Sergio and Norma Pina. Javier will be attending Harvard University and majoring in Euroscience. He attended Irene Garcia Middle School and José de Escandon Elementary. From Jimmy Carter Early College High School, our valedictorian is Marisa Yamas. Marisa is the daughter of Juan and Marisa Yamas. She will be attending the University of Texas at Austin, where she will be majoring in Math. She attended Memorial Middle School and Enrique Camarena Elementary. From Jimmy Carter Early College High School, our salutatorian is April Morales Pérez. Abril is the daughter of Cristo Garza and Margarita Pérez. She will be attending Texas A&amp;M University in San Antonio, where she will be majoring in Biology. She attended Domingo Trevino Middle School, Emiliano Zapata Elementary, and Juan N. Seguin Elementary. Our Thelma R. Salinas STEM Early College High School valedictorian is Luis Saravia. Luis is the son of Jesús and Perla Saravia. He will be attending Stanford University, where he will be majoring in Mechanical Engineering. Luis attended Ann Richards Middle School and Henry B. González Elementary. Our Thelma R. Salinas STEM Early College High School salutatorian is Samantha I. Sánchez. She is the daughter of Pedro Sánchez and Veronica Flores. She will be attending the University of Texas, Rio Grande Valley, where she will be majoring in Environmental Science. She attended Lorenzo de Zavala Middle School and Samford Dice Elementary. Thank you, and congratulations to all of our valedictorians and salutatorians for the 2020-2021 school year. And I would like to take this opportunity to thank you, our board and our school board, for your continuous support of all of our students and our staff. Thank you all.
Thank you, Ms. Flores.
Thank you.
The next item is recognition of UIL Academics Middle School District Champions, Middle School Texas Math and Science Coaches Association State Qualifiers, and High School UIL State Qualifiers. Mr. Abel Samora, UIL Secondary Coordinator, will do these awards.
Good evening. Thank you, Dr. Science, Board members, and Assistant Superintendent, for allowing me the opportunity to recognize our outstanding UIL academic students and for your continued support of UIL Academics. A special thank you to the parents, students, and staff members that are following along via social media. Tonight, we first recognize the La Jolla ISD UIL students that placed first at the La Jolla ISD Virtual District Meet held from February 3 to February 24. In Calculator, 6th grade, Leyla Vela Ann Richards. 7th grade, Jehu Ortega, Dr. Science Middle School. 8th grade, Jorge Vera Ann Richards. In Chess, 6th grade, Diego Santiago, Memorial Middle School. 7th grade, Elián Muñoz, Memorial Middle School. 8th grade, Esteban Ortega, Irene Garcia Middle School. In Dictionary Skills, 6th grade, Jimena Garnica, Irene Garcia Middle School. 7th grade, Prisa Bernal, Chavez Middle School. 8th grade, Giancarlo Vela, Chavez Middle School. In Improv II, 6th grade, Kaylee Álvarez, Cesar Chavez Middle School. 7th grade, Lori Sánchez, Memorial Middle School. 8th grade, Brandon García, Chavez Middle School. In Listening Skills, 6th grade, Barbara Zarate, Lorenzo de Zavala Middle School. 7th grade, Arleth Ríos, Lorenzo de Zavala Middle School. In 8th grade, Deseth Dol Muñoz, Memorial Middle School. In Math Class and Charts, 6th grade, Caitlin Portillo, Memorial Middle School. 7th grade, Amy Trevino, Chavez Middle School. 8th grade, Mauricio Méndez, Irene García Middle School. In Mathematics, 6th grade, Jonathan Moreno, Ann Richards Middle School. 7th grade, Gabriel Ozuna, Chavez Middle School. In 8th grade, Jorge Vera, Ann Richards Middle School. In Modern Oratory, 6th grade, Antonio Alanís, Chavez Middle School. In 7th grade, Alexandra Rangel, Irene García Middle School. 8th grade, Brandon García, Chavez Middle School. Number Sense, 6th grade, Jimena Garnica, Irene García Middle School. 7th grade, Joel Carrasco, Dr. Science Middle School. 8th grade, Jorge Vera, Ann Richards Middle School. In Poetry, 6th grade, Cristian Zapata, Memorial Middle School. Prose, 7th grade, Kaylee Cantú, Lorenzo de Zavala Middle School. 8th grade, Brandon García, Chavez Middle School. In Ready Writing, 6th grade, Paola Rincon, Chavez Middle School. 7th grade, Angela Díaz, Irene García Middle School. 8th grade, Jaylen Huajardo, Trevino Middle School. In Science, 6th grade, Deandra Canales, Irene García. 7th grade, Jason Tamez, Lorenzo de Zavala. 8th grade, Mauricio Méndez, Irene García. In Social Studies, 6th grade, Karen Campos, Irene García. In 7th grade, Atai Sofía Villarreal, Memorial Middle School, and Exaya Samora, Cesar Chavez Middle School. And in 8th grade, Yaretzi Ríos, Lorenzo de Zavala. In Spanish Poetry, 6th grade, Marin Villarreal, García Middle School. 7th grade, Evani Trevino, Memorial Middle School. And in 8th grade, Devani Ordain, Chavez Middle School. Spelling, 6th grade, Barbara Zarate, de Zavala Middle School. In 7th grade, Isaí Banuelos, Lorenzo de Zavala. And in 8th grade, Angela Rodríguez, Memorial Middle School. Our overall district champion was Chavez Middle School. Congratulations to Chavez and all Middle School district champions. Next, we recognize the La Jolla ISD UIL Middle School students that advanced to the Texas Math and Science Coaches Association State Meet held on April 24, 2021. From Ann Richards Middle School, Cassidy Allen, qualified in Number Sense, Calculator, and Math. Lorena Andrade, in Science. Rodolfo Rojas, Calculator. Jorge Vera, in Number Sense, Calculator, and Math, and placed 11th in Calculator. Monica González, Calculator, and Math. Jonathan Moreno, Math. From Chavez Middle School, Jamie Gómez, Calculator, and Science. David Solís, Number Sense, Calculator, Math, and Science, all four events. Brianna Morales, in Calculator, and placed 9th at State. Gabriel Ozuna, Calculator, and Science, and placed 16th at State. Oviedo García, in Calculator. Nelo Lial, in Science. Sebastian Ríos, Science. Isabella Saravia, Calculator, 20th place. Abigail Tabárez, Science. The Chavez Middle School Calculator team ranked 6th overall, the highest ranking for the La Jolla ISD Calculator team, or for any La Jolla ISD Calculator team in the past 10 years. Dr. Science Middle School, Joel Carrasco, Number Sense. Dr. Science Middle School, Jehu Ortega, Calculator. Trevino Middle School, Kendra Chavez, Science. Guadalupe Gómez, Science. Jaylen Huajardo, Science. Jasiel Maldonado, Science. Cristian Santos, Science, and placed 15th at State. Mia Hernández, Science. All five of the Trevino Middle School 8th graders advanced to the state all three years, and this year placed 6th. Irene García Middle School, Hector De León, Number Sense, Calculator, and Math. Mauricio Méndez, Number Sense, Calculator, Math, and Science, also all four events. Esteban Ortega, Calculator. Esteban Ortega, calculator and science. Skylar Rodríguez, science. Alan Álvarez, science. Sylvia Neri, also in all four events, numbersence, calculator, math, and science. Julio Ovaya, calculator. Alexander Soto, science. Deandra Canales, science. Óscar Cantú, calculator, math, and science. Minerva Méndez in math. Isaí Rodríguez, science. From Lorenzo de Zavala Middle School, Audrey Brown, science. Mariana Garza Rodríguez, math. Alexi Hernández, numbersence and math. Sabrina Lial in calculator and placed 19th. Amos Ortiz in science. Jason Tamez, science. Daniel Aguilar, numbersence and math. Daniel Reyna in science. Sofia Tamez, numbersence and math. And Memorial Middle School, Efren Muñoz, math. Fernando Reyes, calculator. Zvetlana Zapata, numbersence and calculator. Damian Benavides in math. Sebastian Martínez, numbersence and math. Caitlin Portillo in calculator and science. Christian Zapata, numbersence and calculator. These are the middle school students that qualified for state, for TMSA state. And lastly, we will recognize three individuals that advanced to the High School UIL Academic State Meet that was held on May 1st, 2021. These students placed in the top three at regionals in order to qualify for state. From Salinas Middle School, Elijah Maldonado in numbersence. From Jimmy Carter, Marisa Yamas, journalism, feature writing. Michael del Ángel, qualified in two events for state. He qualified in news and editorial writing. Congratulations to all these students recognized tonight, as well as all UIL participants, their parents, sponsors, for their continued efforts to ensure that La Jolla ISD UIL academic programs continue to shine. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Samora. The next item is recognition of Jimmy Carter Early College High School Career and Technical Education Commercial Photography Students. Mr. Jorge Flores, our CTE Director, will recognize these students.
Good afternoon, Mr. Board President, members of the board, Dr. Science, administration, and community members. At this time, I'd like to take a little time to recognize some of our students that participated in one of our events. But I'd also like to recognize the, our sponsor, Ms. Nilda Vaya, for her support with our students. Right now, they are online viewing the session along with our sponsor. And so, I want to thank Ms. Vaya for her help and support with her students. And I'd also like to thank Ms. Claudia Gómez for her support of our CTE program. So first up, we have Raquel Cruz. She's an 11th grade student at Jimmy Carter. And she received, she participated and received the Silver Key in Endless Beauty for the Color Photo Award in the Scholastic Art and Writing Awards. We also have Nicole García, a junior, that also participated and received the Honorable Mention Blue for Color Photo, same event. We also have Glenda Villanueva, one of our seniors at that campus, Jimmy Carter. And she participated and received the Honorable Mention for Lost Jewels and the Color Photo as well. And we also finally have also Juliana Méndez, one of our juniors at that campus, for also participating and receiving the Honorable Mention in Haunted Hotel for the Color Photo. So these students did obviously great, and we thank our board and our administration for all the support for our CTE program. And so, we cannot thank you enough. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Flores.
Next, we have recognition of wrestlers advancing to regionals from Palmview High School. Mr. Victor Garza, Athletic Director, will recognize these students.
Good evening, Mr. President, Board of Trustees, Madam Superintendent, staff, administration of staff, and community members that are listening on social media. Once again, we continue with our great successes in athletics. And we present another group of our wrestlers that advanced to the regional levels from Palmview High School. On the girls' side, 4th place finisher and district regional qualifier, a junior, Debony Basaldua. District champion, two-time regional qualifier sophomore, Brooklyn Garza. 3rd place district finisher, two-time regional qualifier, junior, Lily Huajardo. These three young ladies that advanced are coached by Mrs. Isabel Hernández, head wrestling coach at Palmview High School. On the boys' side, on the boys' side, we had 4th place winner in district regional qualifier senior, Alejandro Garza. And district champion in the 195-pound and regional qualifier, a sophomore, Miguel Trevino. These gentlemen were coached by Coach Mario Montelongo and assisted by Jaime Álvarez, their campus principal, Ms. Ivan Bonnie Ayala. We thank them. We congratulate them for their successes outside the academic aspect of it and the extracurriculars. And we thank our board of trustees. We thank their parents for their support in allowing their students and entrusting us with them and this event and this sport. Thank you for your support.
Thank you, Coach Garza.
Mr. Salinas, that concludes the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Doc. Okay, moving on to the next discussion items. Item number one, discussion of the 2021-22 virtual remote learning model.
Thank you, Mr. Salinas. Mr. Martin Muñoz, Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction, will lead
Good afternoon, Board President, Madam Superintendent, ladies and gentlemen of the board, and our community. The purpose of this discussion item is to share a plan for virtual remote learning for next year. As you can read in the presentation, the Texas Legislature is currently deciding whether remote learning will be an option for next year. In the meantime, TEA is recommending that districts put together a plan in the event that it is allowed or it's a viable option for next year. So for next year, administration is recommending that we allow remote learning, but only for students that meet the following criteria. Students that are level academically, students that are present for at least 90% of the grading period. And this applies to individual course subjects at the secondary level and to all grade levels at the primary level. And we would also allow it for students that have medical certification. Now, to start the school year, we would, of course, look at the 2020-2021 student data. Now, we have applied for a grant from TEA that if approved, will provide us some guidance as to how to proceed. So we wanted to share this with you. Any questions or recommendations?
If the teacher's teaching virtually, will she just be teaching virtual students? Or would it be in a setting like it is right now?
Moving forward, Ms. Ochoa, right now, we were just seeking clarification on whether we were going to allow it. With the collaboration with TEA, we're hoping to then decide on the modality. And of course, that would be dependent on the requests and I guess the response from the community, depending on how many students are going to be participating in this option. Concurrent instruction is a difficult process, and it's very difficult for teachers to teach both the in-class and the virtual learning. So moving forward, we're going to be focusing on finding the best way to meet the needs of both the in-person learners and the virtual learners as well.
Do you all have a timeline as to when you want to have some type of final?
Well, as Mr. Muñoz stated, the legislature is going to be making a decision. We hope that it is soon. But as TA has recommended, we are beginning to work on a plan to be ready. And so, we applied for a grant for technical assistance on developing this program. So as soon as we get the approval or not on the grant, we'll move forward and develop a model and present a model to you all when we have it ready.
And TEA did say that we should be getting clarification by the end of the month on whether remote learning is going to be a allowable option for next year.
We need to have lots and lots of conversations.
Yes, definitely. Thank you, Mr. Muñoz.
Thank you, Mr. Muñoz. Next item will be the discussion of the summer school programs.
This discussion will also be led by Mr. Muñoz, Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction.
This discussion item is to present on how, as a district, we're offering a summer school program that is in line with TEA's recommendations on how to catch kids up from the gap that has been created due to school closures and disruptions. As you can see on the slide, TEA is recommending that, one, we provide rigorous materials, i.e., curriculum that would work well both remotely and on campus, that we support our teachers, that we provide more time for learning, and that we empower parents. So on the screen, you will see the summer program that we have currently planned for this summer. The goal of our summer program is to do two things. First, reduce COVID-related learning loss for students in the summer of 2021. And two, recover COVID-related learning loss and accelerate student growth with support. Now, our plan does address TEA's recommendation to provide more time for students that are most in need. Our bilingual and recovery program is scheduled to run from June 7th through July 5th. It's a 20-day summer school program. Now, campus administration, they are encouraging students that are most in need to attend. Now, different from what we've done in the past, our summer program will be available to in-person learners and also to remote learners. And our curriculum is designed to accelerate learning, close the achievement gap, and will provide targeted lessons on high-need reading and math standards to do direct instruction and prescriptive interventions. And also different from last year, we will be providing social, emotional learning supports through our mindfulness program. So we will have counselors working through summer. They will be providing classroom-guidened lessons, individual counseling, and professional development for our summer school teachers through the social, emotional learning framework. And on the next screen, you will also see something that is new to our summer program. Ms. Juliana Garza Quintanilla, our Graduation Student Recovery Director, is working on a plan to partner with Texas Workforce Solutions to provide summer employment to 175 high school summer school students. These students will be able to earn a salary through the workforce solutions while they work in La Jolla ISD departments, our CNS department, our police department, our operations, nursing, and instruction. To support our teachers, while our teachers have been trained to provide in-person and remote learning through our Google Academies, our Apple Academies, and they are receiving ongoing weekly technology coaching and support. Teachers will receive a purposefully designed curriculum that will help them reduce and recover learning loss. Different from last year and previous years, we will have onsite administrators providing support, assistant principals and principals. We will also have a paid in-service and workday to prepare for summer school. Our in-service workday will be on May 29th, and the in-service to prepare teachers for the scheduling curriculum will be on May 22nd. And our in-person staff will receive higher rates of pay. To empower our parents, we will be offering parent meetings to orient parents leading up to summer school. And we will be offering weekly parent trainings in the areas of social, emotional learning, math, and literacy that will empower parents to assist their children at home. And in regards to safety, we will continue with the district's training protocols. Students will be screened when loading the buses. Students and staff will be screened when arriving on campus. Custodial staff will continue disinfecting protocols. Administration staff, administrative staff will continue doing the contact tracing protocols. And classes will have low student ratios to adhere to social distancing guidelines. And that is the intent and the purpose of our summer school program. Thank you for your continued support. Any questions?
Mr. Muñoz, I think this question kind of pertains to what Ms. Ochoa asked you on the school year. For the summer school, the teachers, it says we're providing in-person and remote learning. Will the teachers be doing both? Or some will be doing virtual learning and some will be doing in-person?
Again, Dr. Cantú, at this point in time, we're looking at what the demand will be. How many students are going to be coming for in-person? How many students are going to be choosing the remote learning option? Once they have that, I know we do have different modalities at our disposal to address those needs. If we have a good enough number of students that do come in person, we'll group them with a teacher so that teacher can just do in-person learning. And another teacher could be then dedicated to working with the remote learners.
Yes, because as you stated earlier, it's very difficult for the teacher to do both. Okay, and I don't know if this is coming in another meeting or so, but how are we identifying the students that will be needing summer school?
As it is right now, our principals have looked at the middle-of-year data, they're looking at benchmark data, they're looking at their progress monitoring, they're also looking at attendance. And any student that is struggling is being recommended that they come. It is an option that's also available to any parent that chooses to send their children in for summer school.
I think it's great, too, that we're able to hire some of our own high school students and earn a salary through workforce. It's great.
Thank you, Ms. Muñoz.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, thank you. Next up will be item number three, discussion on elementary and secondary school emergency relief III, formal funds allocated to La Jolla ISD.
Mr. JR Flores, our federal programs director, will lead this discussion. Thank you, Mr. Flores.
Good evening, Board President, and ladies and gentlemen of the board, Dr. Science, and members of the community. We're going to start this presentation on the elementary and secondary school emergency relief, known as ESER III. the purpose of this funds is to support the educational community during the pandemic and also the reopening as well of our schools. The federal government has set aside and committed additional funds that was signed by President Biden in the form of this elementary and secondary education relief fund. There's three of them, ESER I, II, and III, and for the purposes of discussing this, ESER III. ESER I has already been established since March of 2020, and those funds have been already expanded by our district. How much did our district get as per TA allocations? The amounts for La Jolla ISD are as follows. The initial amount of allocation, 2/3, is $98.2 million. Remaining allocation of 1/3, $49.1 million, for a total allocation amount of $147.3 million. This fund must be expanded by September of 2024. As you can see here in this, in this next slide, is the allowable expenditure. I'm going to read some of those verbatim and expand on some of them if you have any questions. Number one, any activity authorized under the Elementary-Secondary Education Act, the adult, excuse me, the IDEA, which is our special education, Adult Education and Family Literacy Act, and the Carl D. Perkins Career and Technical Education Act of 2006. So again, on the, the elementary, secondary education, it involves Title I, all students low economic, students with disabilities, all the whole students. On number two, coordination and preparedness and respond efforts of the district with the state local and local public health departments and other relevant agencies to improve the coordinated responses among such entities to prevent preparedness for and respond to the coronavirus. As you, as you already know, we already have clinics in our, in the district, we had our staff, the essential employees that were coming in and so forth. Item number three, activities to address the unique needs of low economic students, children with disabilities, English learners, racial and economic, excuse me, ethnic minorities, students experiencing homelessness, foster care youth, including how outreach and service delivery will meet the needs of each student population. As you can see, everybody, including special populations, our homeless population as well, we have already identified those as students, the foster kids as well. Item number four, developing and implementing procedures and systems to improve the preparedness and responses efforts of the district. We're engaging in developing this with stakeholders, along with Dr. Science and key personnel from the district. Number five, training and professional development for the staff of the district on sanitation, minimizing the spread Number six, purchasing supplies to sanitize and clean the facilities of our district, including buildings operated by the district. Number seven, planning for coordinating and implementing activities during the long-term closure, including providing meals to eligible students, providing technology for online learning to all students, how to provide guidance for carrying out their requirements under the special education, how to ensure other educational services can continue to provide consistent with all federal, state, and local requirements. Our district, the next one is number eight, purchasing educational technology, hardware, software, and connectivity for all students that engage in regular substantive educational interaction between student and instructors, including low-economic students, students with disability, which may include assisted technology or adaptive equipment. As you can see here, the efforts of connectivity throughout the whole nation has been an issue, but we're, this is another allowable that we can expand on this. Any questions on this slide? Not, moving on to the next one. Item number nine, providing mental health services and support, including through the implementation of evidence-based full-service community schools. And this is one of the ones that we've already seen before the pandemic already, that our country has been experiencing some turmoil as far as in schools, children having some issues. So this is another one that we can expand on the mental health that this has caused as well. Number ten, planning and implementing activities related to summer learning, including providing classroom instruction or online learning during the summer months and addressing the needs of low-economic students, with students with disability, English learners, migrant students, students experiencing homelessness, children in foster care, supplemental after-school programs, providing classroom instruction or online learning, addressing all the needs, again, of the same populations. The next one is number eleven, addressing learning loss among the district students, including the same population that we talked about, low-economic, foster kids, homeless kids, students with disabilities. So as you can see, that including administering and using high-quality assessment, implementing evidence-based activities to meet the comprehensive needs of students, providing information and assistance to parents and families on effectively supporting students, and tracking students' attendance and improving the students' engagement in distance education. Number twelve, school facilities repairs and improvements to enable the operation of schools to reduce risk of virus transmission and exposure to environmental health hazards and to support student health needs. As you already know, we're testing our staff even in town, the temperature and so forth to stop the spread of the virus and so forth. So again, we have an opportunity here to improve our facilities and repair and improve on those as well. Item number thirteen, inspection, testing, maintenance, repair, replacement, and upgrade projects to improve the indoor air quality in school facilities, including mechanical and non-mechanical heating, ventilation and air-conditioning systems, filtering, purification, and other air cleaning, fans, control systems, windows, and door repairs and replacements. So there's a handful there, filters, as you can see, even replacing entire units. Of course, we had to do a comprehensive assessment of all our buildings and so forth. Fourteen, developing strategies and implementing public health protocols, including to the greatest extent practical policies in line with the guidance from the CDC for the reopening and operational school facilities. So number fifteen, other activities that are necessary to maintain the operation and all continuity of service in the district, including continuing to employ existing staff of the ALA to the greatest extent practicable. So here, we're able to provide as well help for teachers and staff. Upcoming events, design a comprehensive tool to gather information from stakeholders, including the needs and areas of priority, which is a comprehensive needs assessment. I would speak, we're already engaged on the comprehensive needs assessment of Title I, and all the activities, all the softwares, everything that we have under federal and state, we're already taking, we're engaged in that process. So we are taking it to another level as well with the things I already mentioned a while ago. We're going to be reviewing and gather the data and articulate a plan of action to address the impact that the coronavirus has had and continues to have on our students and our community. So here, we're going to start doing surveys that we're going to be already implementing with all stakeholders, which will include, but not limited to, campus administrators, staff, teachers, parents, students, central office, and members from the community. Of course, we need to present and discuss the grant requirements to the board in the work session that is coming up. Develop this plan and share with the stakeholders for feedback. We need to have meaningful consultation with them so that we give them the option to give us their opinions, their feedback, recommendations, and take that also into mind. The deadline to submit our application is July 27 of 2021, which is around the corner. The deadline, again, to expand this funds is scheduled for September of 2024. So that is a year we can do the carryover of those three years that is scheduled for. So that's my presentation, a brief presentation for the board. Can I change any comments, any questions?
So it's an application that we have to apply for, correct?
Yeah, that's for, the first phase, ESER I was on paper and pencil, and this one is on the E-grant now. It's an application that we had to, I'm the official for the school district that can type it in and, of course, gather all the information.
And we haven't received it yet, but we were a lot.
It's already open, so that we can start working on it.
Okay. I guess what I'm asking is, do we have the funds in our hands, in our district right now?
Not yet, no. Once it's completed, submitted for TA, TA will then go through a process, and if they have any clarifications or any negotiations that they call, in other words, that, you know, something that we need to change or add, they will let us know through this process. And once this is established, then they release the funds.
Are we the only district in this situation, or does other districts have their monies in their hands already? Or do they also have to apply, those that were awarded?
Yeah, although they were awarded, they had to go through this process, which is the E-grant, they had to apply, go through those steps that I was describing.
Okay. Just for clarification, because there's a lot of misinterpretation out there in the district, and I think it's important for all our staff to know what is true and what is not true. You know, I would even have to say that I would like to have these steps even in both languages and even given to all our staff members so that we know that we're not hiding anything from them and that we're working together to make our district better, meeting these guidelines from TEA.
Well, certainly, yes. As a matter of fact, part of that of the service is to get their, also their input, their opinions and so forth, and of course, when the plan is formalized, finalized, then we can share that with them for feedback as well, before it's approved by the state.
Yeah.
And of course, this plan that, once it's finalized, we have to make it public and accessible in both languages. So it's going to be within thirty days of being awarded, we have to post it on the website to the public. But again, you know, this plan has to be shared with the stakeholders.
Very good.
We are beginning a formal process of just communicating these requirements. We started with you today. We do have a meeting with our principals where we will share presentations that they can then turn around and share with their staff. We will do the same thing with our parent groups, where Ms. Ochoa will be using the same presentation with all of her staff so that they can use with their parents, so that everybody has the initial information and everyone can be thinking about it. And that information is so that when the surveys come to parents or staff, they will know and be prepared because they would have gotten information on what the grant is and what the allowable uses are, just the way you all got. So this is the first step in the communication process, and then, once we're done with the communication process, then we'll begin the input process from all stakeholders.
And all departments, too?
Yes.
Okay.
All departments are already checking their, they're making the comprehensive needs assessment and what they need to operate and so forth. So these funds are going to be in addition to what we have, right? And we can supplement and supply, in other words, so we can use that money for anything that we need to, and of course, the state has to approve our plan.
Thank you, Mr. Munoz.
Thank you for your clarifying questions, Ms. Ochoa. Are there any other questions from any of the Board of Trustees?
Thank you, Mr. Flores.
Thank you, thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Up next, we have a consent agenda. Can I attend a motion?
So move.
Have a motion?
Second.
And a second. All those in favor, indicate, baste and aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes, and we come back to letter A, contracts. Number four, mental health awareness month proclamation.
So move.
Have a motion?
Second.
And a second. All those in favor, indicate, baste and aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to, under B, bits. Number five, approval of the contract evaluation matrices.
So move, five and six.
I have a motion for items five and six. Can I attend a second?
Second.
All those in favor, indicate, baste and aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Under letter C, business and finance. Number four, approval of the acceptance of substantial completion of the La Jolla ISD job order contract with Performance Services Incorporated, La Jolla High School, Skylights Roof, and Vocational Roof. Can I attend a motion?
So move.
Have a motion? Was that you, Ms. Ochoa?
Yes.
Okay. For the record, Blanca, can I attend a second?
Second.
And a second. All those in favor, indicate, baste and aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Number five, under letter C, discussion and possible action on ranking of competitive sealed proposals for the La Jolla ISD Juarez Lincoln High School Drainage Improvement Project.
I so moved on items under business and finance, five, six, seven, and eight.
Okay. I have a motion up to number eight from five to eight. Can I attend a second?
Second.
And a second. All those in favor, indicate, baste and aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes all the way to number eight, right, Ms. Ochoa?
Yes.
Okay. So number nine, nomination for the Texas Association of School Boards, Board of Directors for Region One, Position A.
On this item, it's open for any nominations, nominate any board member for Position A. It's not required, but it's open for nominations.
Okay, so then we can just leave it like that, Doc?
Yes.
Okay, so then, number ten, for legal, that would be just no action or, okay, so no action on number nine, for the record, Blanca. And number ten, under letter C, business and finance, nomination for the Texas Association of School Board of Directors for Region One, Position B. Is that more interesting?
This is the same board, but a different seat, Position B.
I thought that maybe Ms. Ochoa would like, no, Ms. Ochoa? Okay, so the next one, guys, under letter D, instructions, moving on to student services, we, actually, number E, that's it, E, be approval of the 2021-22 Administrative Guidelines, Employee Compensation Plan, Pay Plans, and Stipends.
I move that we take this item into executive session.
And I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, indicate, baste and aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. At this time, it is six fifty-four, and under section codes five five one zero seven one, five five one zero seven two, and five five one zero seven four, we want it to executive session. We're out of the executive session, and it's eight twenty-two. Next up, the H personnel.
So move to approve under human resources, number one, as discussed in executive session.
Second.
Okay, have a motion and a second. All those in favor, indicate, baste and aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Need items two through twelve?
So move.
Second.
Okay, have a motion and a second. All those in favor, indicate, baste and aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. It is eight twenty-three, immediate adjournment.